Okay, so we can call to order this first meeting of the Police Practices and Public Safety Alternatives Subcommittee of the Fairfax Res J. And we should begin with a roll call. I can go ahead and do that. So Daria.
Present.
Alexandra.
Here.
Veronica.
Here.
And Patrice.
Here.
And I'm here, Bruce. Okay. So one more formality, we need to approve the agenda and affidavit of posting. And this would be the time if we wanted to make any suggesting changes to the agenda, although we can rearrange things as we go as well. The affidavit of posting is just saying that we recognize that it was posted properly.
Daria has her hand.
Daria?
Yeah, I wanted to mention that I had requested to see the MOU that was mentioned by the community member and would like to put on the agenda an opportunity to just discuss that briefly.
Well, we can't really discuss things or at least take actions without it being on the agenda, but
Right.
We will have an area of the agenda to talk about information that we need and we can certainly discuss it there and
That's, that's my idea.
Yeah, and we can also at the, in the agenda, we have a chance to talk about what we would like to see on the future agenda, so.
Perfect.
Yeah, this first meeting just kind of.
Yes.
But yeah, hard to make it general.
Sounds good, yes.
Yeah, quick question around that, when, when the approval of the agendas requested that and the opportunity to make changes to their agenda, that means taking things off the agenda or switching where they're at technically? Is that correct? Just so that I know moving forward. Great, thank you. I make a motion to approve the agenda.
I second.
Okay, I'll take a quick roll call vote. I'm assuming Veronica and Patrice are for it. And so Alexandra?
Yes.
And Daria?
Hi.
And I vote I as well. Okay, so I think you're, if you're looking at the agenda, the first item there is Agenda Review. I guess we just took care of that. So it says here PPPSA subject to the Brown Act. That was something that Garrett added, so I think what he means is just to verify that, that we're this, this also like the, the overall Res J is subject to the Brown Act and that we shouldn't be having conversations offline among more than half or more of us about any subjects that we talk about here too. Just so that it's all for the public. Veronica?
Yeah, I had a question because I was under the understanding that the Brown Act applies to the committee, but that when subcommittees are formed, we are able, the five of us, to discuss things and it doesn't fall under the same limit of the Brown Act, except if we engage with other Res J committee or majority of the Res J committee members. So.
That's what, that's the way it usually works, and this is confusing for me as well, because this, this committee was stipulated by council to be a public committee. And so this committee then is unusual in that way. It's odd in that this committee, we limited the number of members to less than a quorum and yet we don't have that benefit that since we're less than a quorum, we can have meetings without the noticing process and, and so forth. But that was what the council meant by being a public, public committee.
Yeah, I should just follow up differently. To clarify that.
Yeah.
Because I, I feel surprised by that and feel like there's an opportunity to be moving forward with things and keep momentum going that is stalled by the lack of being able to talk except every two weeks. Although, of course, we wouldn't action on any items without public input and we'd come to the public with what we've worked through as a subcommittee. It feels like the reason a subcommittee is formed is to be able to actually get working.
Yep.
So I'll email Garrett on it.
I find it odd as well from my experience with other, other town committees. Yeah. It's, yeah, this is an odd hybrid. And we can maybe continue to get clarification about that. I'm, I'm happy to, to ask any questions about that or, or you can as well.
Great.
Okay, and then length of meetings, the, the Zoom, I mean, the, the doodle poll for this had one hour time slots. And so just in the interest of all of us knowing what we're getting into, I would suggest that maybe we run until eight thirty tonight. That would be an hour and a half, just because an hour is not very long. But I wanted to make sure that's okay with people and in the future, we can just stipulate them as an hour and a half from the beginning. Is that gonna work?
About eight fifteen, but I don't mind everybody continuing without me.
Eight fifteen?
Yeah.
It's fine with me.
Thank you.
Is that good with everyone?
That works for me.
Okay, let's just, let's not do a roll call. Then we'd have to go till like thirty. Okay, and so as for chairing this, at this point, I've been the de facto in that role. I mean, that's what I'm doing now. We, kind of a related question which we can get to would be whether we want to ask for a facilitator. Presumably Lisa for this, but the comments on the overall Res J seem to indicate that this committee wanted to talk about that among ourselves. So that would be an opportunity and we can rearrange these if we want to talk about that now we can, but that's, you know, we've got some other items that are kind of more to the, yeah, you'd like to talk about that at this point? Okay, all right.
Feel really excited about the idea of Lisa jumping in to just get us started the same way that she's getting started with the Res J committee at large. She's done an excellent, I feel she's done an excellent job of, of doing that. And so I would be in favor of her serving as the interim chair essentially as the facilitator. And does that mean she would design the agenda?
With the Res J, she designs the agenda in collaboration with Stephanie and myself, so, but she's got a lot of, a lot of skill and, and, and knowledge about how to kind of guide us through getting started as we've all seen with the Res J. I would expect, this is not something I've discussed with Lisa, but I would expect that with the subcommittee, we would get into the meat of the work more quickly because we're, we've sort of gotten past the figuring out how we're going to work together and the norms process, just sort of inherit that work.
Yeah.
Daria?
I agree with Veronica and I think it's an opportunity to really be strategic about using Lisa and help having that role. Have her work with us specifically to enable us to take over what she would be demonstrating. So an even closer working relationship with her to hand that off at the earliest opportunity after taking full advantage of what she does have to offer. But I, I'm aware of the financial issue and also want to expedite the process and, you know, not lengthen it unnecessarily.
Patrice?
I, I agree with what Daria has, has just said. I think that Lisa would be invaluable to kick this off. However, I'm already concerned about managing the budget because we have such a small budget and we want to do things. So I want to make sure that we're allocating dollars appropriately.
Yes, to that. I remember
Yeah.
Garrett had mentioned that there's a potential that there might be a chance to work within the budget already that she's, that has been allocated toward Lisa and still have her work with us. I remember.
Yeah, yeah, well, he was speaking of the sort of cap that, that been agreed to for, for leases that would quite possibly still fit within that cap. Yeah. It'll still be hourly time, though.
And then I'm just curious as, you know, I've what to reiterate what I brought up last Thursday and to open that up. And I know Patrice, you had asked for us to keep hashing it out and definitely feel grateful for that and want to just speak to that a little bit more now with you all and hear what you think. That sense of feeling just the awareness that this is not necessarily a welcomed topic to be discussed within our, our town. And I know that there are members of our community who feel very strongly against the idea of creatively visioning alternatives to public safety and ways in which our policing can continue to be more and more anti-racist. Knowing that, I'm aware, or I'm curious, Bruce, as a council member, if you have received emails or felt intimidated by or threatened by people not in favor of having transparent, really public engagement with policing.
That's, that's a great question and thank you for asking it. Yeah, I, we get emails. Most of them are directed at all the council members, so we all get kind of the same, but we get emails that say that they support the police and feel like they're doing a good job and, you know, that's, there are emails like that. They're not overwhelming in number, but there are a fair number of, of people who have expressed that viewpoint. And then there are certainly an equal number of people who have expressed the viewpoint that we should, that they're really glad that we've formed the Res J, they're really glad that we're looking at these issues and they're very supportive of the overall movement that, that has resurged in the last year to, to, to get us into this discussion in a deeper way, a more recent surge of deeper discussion about these issues. So you know, we get support across the board and it's been very civil. I wouldn't say that I felt attacked in any way at this point. You know, there've been times when that does happen as a council member, but not thus far with regard to the Res J. So, yeah, I'm not feeling terribly pressured myself. That's just my feeling. I feel sort of nervous and kind of heightened just personally because this is important, what we're doing, and I don't know where it's going. And, and as you said, I, I share the perception that this is something that a lot of people are, are watching. But I guess my expectation is, or my hope is that what this committee comes up with as suggestions will be things that with, within the proper context and explanation can be seen by the community as, as valuable and, and doable.
Yeah.
So I hope that we can do that. I think we will. From what I've, what I've learned of all of you so far, I think we've got a group here that's gonna, that's gonna think outside of the box, but also understand where our community is and where our unique police department is, so. That's my feeling. Since you asked, thank you.
Yeah, sorry you ever have to deal with any aggressive or threatening. It's very.
Well, yeah, I don't know how often you went to council meetings before Zoom, but it, Fairfax has a reputation. We have the longest council meetings in the county. And it's, it's sometimes felt like it was a blood sport to come out and hurl insults at the council, but it's gotten a lot better in recent years. And I think there are a few reasons for that and then I don't know why all, but it has gotten a lot better. I'm glad of that. I feel like we have a good council too. We work well together. Alexandra, do you have thoughts on the facilitation question?
Uh, no, I'm in full agreeance with everyone. I think Lisa would be a great starting point. And I think especially because they're such a small group and it seems like we're all pretty comfortable communicating with each other that we can like really fast track the transition. So I feel confident in that.
Okay, okay, so we can report that back to staff and to the rest of the committee that we, that we feel like we would like to have Lisa for at least a little while. And that has consistently been what Lisa has said is her intention as well to
Yeah.
Not be in a permanent position with this, but to leave us able to facilitate ourselves, I guess, as it were. Okay, so we jumped ahead to that. So as far as chair, maybe that kind of addresses that issue. If we're going to have a facilitator, we don't have to question that that much, but maybe how the agendas are formed is something that we. Yeah, Veronica?
I'm not sure if it fits within this. There's just two thoughts and the, the first is hearing Lisa as the facilitator, which is sweet, but also curious about the potential of thinking about having one of us be the chair for a lot of reasons, to be able to just take the spotlight off of a council member for various reasons and to empower as community members our opportunity to be engaged in the drafting of the agenda. And I don't know that we necessarily need to choose that right now. If we're gonna have Lisa facilitate us, she might be able to help us with that process. Just wanted to throw that out there. See if anybody feels inspired about that or.
Yeah.
I have the same thoughts.
I would, I would suggest that we, as you said, let, have Lisa come in and then help us with that. Lisa has also, because she's worked with us on creating the Res J agendas, she knows a bit more about the creation of the agenda and the, and has, we've had a lot of communication back and forth with Garrett about how it needs to be structured and so forth. So that's, so she's got some knowledge, some background on that, so.
Yeah, and that was just my second question referencing, you know, Garrett identified that as the town manager, as he spoke in the Thursday meeting of the Res J committee, that he is the liaison with the police for the town council. And I would imagine it being very appropriate for us to welcome him in for questions that we have, but in general to have him aiding in the crafting of the agenda doesn't feel appropriate to me. Dare I say that?
Yeah, well, his, his input has mostly been kind of procedural and how it has to work with the Brown Act. Like you have to have the roll call, that sort of thing, you know, that's. But, yeah, I understand what you're saying. And I, as you see on our agenda here, I, I would like, and this was kind of my input to this agenda that I would like tonight for us to move toward possibly at our next meeting, which will decide when it might be. We, we need to do a doodle poll to figure out the exact dates. Something like two weeks from now sounds great to me. That at some, somewhere around that time, we have our next meeting and that we invite the interim police chief, Rico Taberanza, to join us and that tonight, and I spoke with Rico a few weeks ago about at some point joining our meetings and he said that he would be happy to do so, but he would appreciate if we gave him some questions ahead of time or information that we liked from him ahead of time, so he would be able to be prepared. And so respecting that and also thinking that that's a good, a good idea, a good way to move forward and get more done. I was thinking that would be sort of the main actions that we would take tonight would be to look at whether we wanted to do that, to invite Rico to the next meeting and what questions we might want to send him so that he can prepare. And I don't know if you saw, I didn't know this ahead of time at all, but I just saw this the other day that I guess Rico just had a baby, so.
Oh.
There's a little bit going on in Rico's life right now. I expect two weeks from now he'll be fully.
Exhausted.
Tired. Um, I, I would like to echo what Bruce just said. I think that bringing Rico in early and as often as we can get him is invaluable again because I don't want to put forth proposals that have already been tried and have failed. I think that he would be an excellent resource for us to understand what's happened, what's happening now and what might be viable.
Yeah, and, and also there are things that have been tried and there aren't enough resources to do them as much as we'd like, but we can find out that, oh, actually this worked well or it didn't work well or whatever, and then advocate for more resources. So there's, yeah, there's a lot to be learned. Yeah. Veronica?
Feel really excited about working with him and have a feeling of wanting to be really clear. Maybe we can get there by the end of this meeting, but be really clear about what it is that we're bringing to him and really conscious of designing those questions in a way that's really informed and feel a little bit like it might be premature to invite him to the next meeting. And would propose that we have one facilitated meeting with Lisa where we really polish with intention and care what it is we're presenting to our acting interim chief of police and then welcome him in at our, our next, so not next, third meeting.
Okay, Daria?
I just want to say that makes such good sense. I couldn't agree more.
So tonight we could, we would, if we did that, we would maybe be able to get started on that process, but then next meeting, continue that process with the benefit of Lisa here. And maybe one of her magic jam boards or something to be able to, to really fine tune that. Patrice?
I, I was just thinking to myself that it might be a good exercise for all of us to go through the report cards of how police departments and the sheriff's departments are looked at within Marin County. I know that we have an A and the sheriff's department has an F, so maybe we can look at the criteria that has been laid out there to jumpstart our questions.
Okay.
Nice chat.
Alexandra, what do you think about this range of possibilities?
Yeah, no, I, I completely agree with everyone. I think it would be nice for us to be a little bit more prepared instead of rushing through before we meet with him, just so that we can acknowledge his time and presence in the space as well as our own. And I just feel it's, it's, it's more productive. But I also think that if we can get this ball rolling like as soon as possible, that's very useful as well.
Well, as far as keeping the ball rolling, I, I'm assuming that we can meet, let's say, every two weeks pretty regularly at this point. We, I, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't be able to, so. We should be able to move along. Okay, so that sounds like a proposal that we all are in agreement with, that we would aim toward inviting Rico to our third meeting and we'll have a facilitation for the second meeting. And we'll begin tonight and continue with facilitation to, to think about questions and possibly also resources as Patrice suggested. Patrice, what you're thinking of a specific place to look for the report cards, just so we all can look in the same place? How would that, how would that work? Do you want to?
I can't remember where I found the report card, but I know it was somewhere, I believe it was the website that represents the Board of Supervisors that had all of the different report cards for the different towns in Marin.
Okay.
I can, I can send an email to the group after I, I find it and, and point you guys to the report cards.
Yeah, and in terms of the Brown Act, it is, it is okay for us to share information. And also a way to be careful about that is to send it to the chair or if a committee has a secretary that or send it to Anne. That would probably be the best to send something to Anne to be distributed to the committee that's of an informational nature.
Excellent. So when I find it, I'll, I'll send it to Anne. I'll, I'll find it tomorrow first thing.
So the idea is to, is to avoid essentially expressing an opinion on something and sending that to the committee like, here's something I found that's really outrageous. Take a look at this or, you know, but just here's a useful thing we could look at that's informational, that's something that we can share.
Okay, perfect.
And with an eye toward not deluginess, so we can actually all read it. Veronica?
Just, I love that idea of Patrice and curious, what, where do the report cards come from or who is the like agency that's providing the, the observation? Do you know?
I believe it's the Board of Supervisors and also commit, community members, but I'm not, don't quote me on that. I can, I can do a little summary at the beginning that's, that to your point, Bruce, is not leading in any way and not discussing what we should do with this information, but just kind of summarizing where it's coming from and, and what the data points are.
I wonder if we can bring in some more, in addition to have multiple lenses. I know that there's various agencies that have their, their, the Marin Board of Supervisors is definitely. Yeah, I'm just curious about how progressive are the lenses that are going to be looking and I'd love to see the report cards and read over them. And I'm curious if we could be open to looking at a couple more to kind of compare across the board. Does that feel awesome?
So that if you have particular suggestions, Veronica, you might send them to Anne as well to distribute. Is that okay with you, Anne, if you can be the, the disseminator of informational?
Yeah, I'm hap, that's easy. Happy to do that.
Great, all right. Thank you. Yeah, that, I would be more comfortable with not being in that role and I'd rather be a member of the committee rather than having to distance myself from it. Okay, well, this is good. We're making, making good progress. This feels good to me. So there's something written here, objectives in the role of PPPSA. Maybe we all believe we know that, but if anybody has any comments on that subject and then we can we're really getting down to the, to starting to think about questions that we would have in, in the, in the actual subjects and talking with Rico.
Pardon my ignorance, but do we have an objective statement for this subcommittee?
Not that I know of in any written form. Unless something was developed in the Res J process for it, but I don't recall one. Veronica?
It's like a perfect thing for Lisa to help us.
Yeah. Yeah.
As in work on that offline and, and bring that to the next meeting or something of that nature, like a formal.
Well, I wonder. I know that, you know, for the mission and visions, the subcommittee for the larger Res J committee, that was what we did, which was very helpful. If it's something that we felt like we could kind of. It feels like something that deserves its own meeting for us to have. I wonder if that could be something that is part of next week, next meeting in two weeks. But we met for an hour just to give you the preview of that, so if it felt helpful. And then we worked offline for the week, going back and forth on the doc that we created with our essentially objectives and goals are part of the mission statement. And then came back again and met to see how we liked what we developed and then did our, our final draft on our behalf, but then our loose draft for the Res J committee. And I feel like that could be a great process for us to follow.
Are you suggesting this full subcommittee do that process or a subcommittee of this subcommittee do that process? This full subcommittee? Okay, so that would mean it would be noticed meetings like this, but that we would dedicate time in the meeting to working on a mission statement, mission and vision statement. So how would that fit in with, with the time that we would spend in the, in this meeting and the next, getting ready for a third meeting in which we invite Rico? I'm just asking.
So I I'm thinking. I I'm thinking it's definitely important that we have a written statement. To give out to the public, just knowing that not everyone is going to be at these meetings or. Receive the same kind of information in in the same way. So I'm wondering if maybe. We, since we had originally intended to start working on some questions tonight. If we get started on that, then perhaps once. Is to prepare for the next meeting, we come up with maybe three main points that we feel are. Our mission and vision in our heads and and I'm. Feeling confident that we will be able to see overlaps in that. And then be able to get right to work when we come into the meeting with Lisa. And be like, these are our points, let's find overlap and let's go from there so that we come in ready to go. That'll save us time and then we can pick up the questions, maybe in the last half hour or whatever time we have left.
Love that.
So start working a bit on the questions for Rico now. And then toward the end of this, we've got about an hour right now. Well, we've got less than an hour, we've got forty minutes right now. And then, but then. Toward the end of this meeting, speak a bit about some ideas for mission and vision. Is that is that what you were saying? And then that. Puts that into our heads, which we then come back to next meeting. And try to refine that. I'm just, I'm just wondering if I'm hearing that correctly.
Yeah, so my understanding was that we were gonna start the questions tonight. If I'm. If I misinterpreted that, then that's totally cool. That doesn't have to happen, but.
I was thinking, yes.
Okay, yeah, and then, I mean, of course, if we have time, it'd be awesome to get to get started on the. Mission and vision, but I think if we leave the meeting and on our own, think about it and prepare ourselves. At the next meeting, we can start to just go for it. So it doesn't necessarily have to be talked about in this meeting. But I was just thinking it'd be nice to be prepared for the next meeting.
Yeah, I I agree with with everything Alexandra said, because oftentimes when you look at a list of questions, you can bubble up your mission. And your vision statement from that.
Yeah, okay, that sounds great to me. I see everybody nodding, so I think I think you've hit it, Alexander. So shall we, without any. Facilitated process whatsoever, shall we? Brainstorm some thoughts about questions and then, of course, we'll refine them better next next meeting, so. We can just pretend we have a jam board and sort of brainstorm some things that are on our minds. All right.
Note taker for for this portion or?
Yeah, that is a great question. Yeah, I've. It's hard to scribble at the same time as we work. Now, we are recording this, but. One possibility is one of us could review the recording and and. Refine our notes. Does anybody want to try to take some notes as we? As we get into this part? Veronica? Yay, thank you.
I I have a question. The the first thing that comes to the top of my head with regard to. Questions for Rico is that I'm very curious about. How he would describe the department's. Reaction or feelings about this committee. And what concerns or hopes they might have.
Yeah. That you got that, that's that's a good, that's a great question.
Really important for us to know how they're feeling.
And I I would like to hear from him firsthand how he sees working with us, how he he feels about working with us, how he. Sees that process, because I don't wanna define that for him. He may have ideas already.
Go ahead, Veronica.
Dariet, to just follow that, Patrice, to ask him like what role he sees is. Action within or his participation or his joining of the committee at times to. Touch base with us and participate in the ways that he does, what that looks like for him.
Yes.
You know. I'm I'm very interested in having, you know, open communication with the police and having a an ongoing conversation. And I I'm really interested in hearing from them about what they feel are obstacles or barriers to their own. Effectiveness in our community. I I really wanna hear directly about those things. And how they feel they're perceived by the community.
And because this is free flowing and not necessarily in any logical order, I'd love to see. Statistics on arrest demographics. So who's being arrested? Why are they being arrested and how do these groups segment into each other if if they do? Are there racial lines? Are there cultural lines? Are there themes and trends that they've seen?
Yeah, and I know that that the statistics are out there and available, but they're a little, you gotta kind of do a little bit of. It'd be great just to be like, hello. Abra, so could you please just hand them to us? That would be so helpful.
Yes.
I have a couple of questions to suggest. I would want to ask him, is is he open to an alternative public safety model? Is does that, is that something? Feels excited and willing to engage with us about. And I know there's a trend in a lot of cities where they have had very successful. Alternatives to public safety models that they title the. Chief of Police is no longer the Chief of Police, but a Public Safety Manager. And feel curious if he'd be open to considering things like that.
Are you, you're writing this down? I'm scribbling these notes, but. Yeah, maybe we can compare notes afterwards and make sure we got it all. Good, yeah.
I I'd like to better understand how our Fairfax Police are trained. And what exactly they're trained for.
That information is available too, by the way, online. That's police training is pretty standard and they have certain expectations that they have to meet, so. That is also available to the public online.
I I just wonder if it's changing. So, you know, as as we've been moving forward. Committee, I've heard from friends across the country that new training procedures are going into effect such as. No more shoot to kill, but learning how to shoot or don't shoot. So I'd just like to understand from him. Exactly, exactly what they're doing.
The escalation training.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, there there is a good description of those things. From the San Rafael Police Department. About police officers' responses to chronic, to critical incidents and how they. The parameters of their responses, it's it's very clearly articulated about what the expectations are and the changes.
And you said San Rafael Police.
Yeah, a lot of police departments, but that's the one I'm most familiar with.
Can I just say that I really appreciate the knowledge that you're bringing into the subcommittee?
Yeah, I did, I did a little, a little research.
Yeah, the police officers all go through a police academy, but I would be curious what beyond that or how. People are selected in hiring. We know that the former police chief, who recently retired, who. Has hired most of the people in the current department, including Rico. He had ten years of experience on the Fairfax Police Department and he, so he has. More to say probably in terms of hiring, because he's had that experience of. Selecting the hiring people and trying to retain them. So that that question is equally as important as training. You know, how you select among the people who come out of the academy and what you're looking for and. And what you do after that to create a culture within the police department, so.
And did just following up on on what Bruce said. I've al- always heard colloquially that Fairfax is a place where you come to get trained and it's a launching pad and then you move. To other places. So I'd like to hear more about retention strategies and why that has become. What it has become, because it feels like people come here to be trained, because obviously Fairfax Police does a great job. But then we're not able to retain them for lengthy periods of time. So what is the obstacle there? In his opinion.
I'd be curious to know about the diversity that's currently in the department, simply based on employment. And then also what training or plans surrounding race or implicit bias are already in place? If any, I'd be curious to know more about that and see if there's some ways that we can. Get involved and and talk about that more.
What was the second, just so I can understand it clearly? Diversity that exists in the department, right, but then.
Then then I would be curious to know more about what plans are currently in place. In terms of like implicit bias and. Race. And how their training is to like approach those situations. Yeah.
Okay.
I I I think when, once you see what every police officer has to go through and what's required of them. You will see that there are a lot of gaps. And there's a lot, in my personal opinion, that can be done in terms of. Changing that and providing more education. It's tough, but because. Well, unfortunately, it doesn't have a lot of extra time to do that and most, I don't think, wanna spend their time in a classroom. But wanna be out doing their work. And so it's a big issue and an important one, because there are some huge gaps.
Veronica.
I'd be curious also to know, to what extent does our police department work with the Mobile Crisis Team? And engaging in the dialogue around mental health crises that are called into the Fairfax Police Department and. Opportunities to divert. Armed police officers responding when it's appropriate or welcoming the Mobile Crisis Unit in right away. As a default, those types, that type of question, I haven't worded it perfectly, but.
Yeah, and just building upon what what you said, Veronica, I'd I'd love to understand the role of social workers. In certain calls with the Fairfax Police Department.
Yeah, I you know, I I don't thi- I don't think they do work with social workers, but that's certainly an area. As a social worker that I would like to discuss. But. Oh, yes, I was gonna say, there are some models that we might wanna review for. Community policing and proactive policing. That articulate some of the things that you're talking about in terms of collaboration, partnerships. Coordination of services.
Yeah, yeah, I would, if I, if you don't mind that I throw in a few. The, what does community policing mean to the Fairfax Police Department? Because that's, that's the way it's been described and that's the way they, that's, that's why we. That's how Fairfax has often felt that why we have our own police department is because we want community policing that fits our community. And so what does? What does that mean to?
Right, yeah, right, because, sorry, there is a particular model called community policing and it would be interesting to see whether or not. It coincides with what law enforcement perceives they're doing, because it does involve a lot of community interaction.
Yeah. Veronica.
Somebody else, when you're community policing, feel anxious about, like, I I think of George Zimmerman. Who was the? Man who shot. Not Tamir Rice. Troy Van Martin, you know, his community policing his neighborhood in a very. Very clear.
Yeah, yeah, right. I don't think that's what Fairfax was meant by community policing, but yeah. Yeah, yeah.
But but that's a really important point, because. Community policing does involve the community, so and the community participating in reducing. Crime, so, you know, and for example, the Community Watch Program, but. You're spot on identifying that as really needing clear articulation. Exactly what that means, pros and cons.
My guess is that's not really what is meant by our police department being tasked with being a community policing model, but. These are all great questions too, and it's, I think it's gonna be really good to interact one on one with. With our police department and really find out how they feel about this and just what their. What their mindset is on these things. Patrice.
I I recently learned that we have a cadet program for our police department, and I'd like to learn more about that. How are cadets selected? What's the path of becoming, of going from a cadet to an officer? Is there a path and? Just understanding more about kind of, I I guess, our our feeder system, so to speak, given that we have high turnover.
Yeah, that's a great question. What are the, what are the ranks and the roles within the department? Yeah. Veronica.
Really enjoying this. By the way, it feels so generative and exciting to think of some of these things. I had reached out to. Chief Moran in the summer about the possibility of riding along as a community member, which is supposed to be very available, and there was a response of. Just kind of like, nobody really does that actually, and it didn't feel as readily available. So I would like to ask. What ride along policies are for the police department and how we can, if people want to participate in that, let them know it's available. I didn't even realize it was available and. Feel like that can can be helpful. And a member of the community called in, I feel like in the fall, to a town council meeting as we were forming Res J. And they said, how wonderful would it be if when you got pulled over by a police officer? Especially if you're a person of color, when you get pulled over by a police officer. That they would introduce themselves to you. Instead of saying driver's license and registration, please, or all of the other ways that they could be engaging, but that there's a code of expectation that there's a. An awareness and a sensitivity to the the heightened state of fear that's rightfully present within folks of color as they get engaged. By police officers and have them have a script that's expected, that's much more. Personable and make sure that they, the person of color or person in general is feeling very safe with that encounter.
And and I just have to say here, as a person of color in Fairfax who's lived all over the world. I feel like they actually do that and they do a great job of doing that. And so we just need to understand, I think we need to ask questions before we make assumptions that they're not doing something, because. For me, this has been the most welcoming community for my minority ship, if you would, that I've ever lived in.
I recall you saying, Patrice, way back at the council interviews, that you were more wary of. Some members of the community than of the police, so, yeah, it is a, it is an interesting take.
Yes.
Yeah. Um, my feeling is they really strive to be professional, as that word means to them. And not everybody in the community has a a set like that, that they strive to be. They're just being whoever they are, which might be they're having a bad day or whatever, anything can happen. So, yeah, it's um. Yeah, I I actually, uh, I don't know what this means. I probably shouldn't even mention it. But I I was really struck and and uh pleased to see two Fairfax Police Officers walking down the street um downtown today. A couple of times I saw them because I was downtown for a while. I saw them just walking around for a while and and uh so I I like that. I that's something that to me has been what I think of when I hear the term community policing is is sort of getting out of the car and walking around. There was a time in which the uh, I think it was before Chief Moran's time, but that I'm not sure. But before my time anyway, when um the police uh Fairfax Police used bicycles for a while. And then they quit doing that. I don't know why that didn't work out. But that sort of thing of just sort of getting out into the community so people because I passed these two officers on the sidewalk and I said hello and it was just this nice little, you know, it's like you're just talking with a person. So that sort of day to day interaction when you're not being pulled over and there's not a tense situation, but you just see the see people. It's something that uh I've heard, I've heard people suggest that that would be a good practice to to try to to try to do. Sorry.
Yeah, um, so to your point, Veronica, um, I I'm a I'm a clinical and forensic social worker. And I work primarily with trauma. And um, it's my opinion that um all of the work that we do would be uh more effective and better more effective if we make decisions through a trauma-informed lens, recognizing that the majority of people are traumatized in some way, and certainly people of color. And our uh law enforcement should be trauma-informed. Um, not only to take better care of themselves, but to have a more effective response and understanding of the community, the individuals that they're working with. And I I feel quite strongly about it and have done quite a bit of um work on that. So I'm hopeful that we can um affect that. And sort of switch the view a little bit. Sometimes, you know, uh crimes are a symptom of trauma, right? And for example, we had an incident down the street here uh that uh Patrice was uh participated in. That was.
Not not as the criminal, not as the criminal.
No, not not this time. But, you know, it was clear, you know, it was very obvious this was somebody who was really traumatized. Um, and, you know, police would benefit from understanding that, of course, they have to be protect themselves and the community and be prepared to do that, but also to understand that there there's probably something much bigger going on. And so the approach, if uh compassion-based and trauma-informed, will be more effective.
Yeah, yeah. And with alcoholism and addiction, there's generally a root of that behavior. That's um that goes pretty deep. So, yeah, compassion and being able to deal with that.
Yeah.
I I would also like to know how and and perhaps this is redundant with some of the things that other folks have said. But I would like to understand how mental illness has um been exacerbated during the pandemic? And what policies have been implemented to address that? I mean, so so Daria and I live on the same street and the the gentleman she's talking about was a teenager who was having a psychotic break. And I just like, I I think that those incidents are escalating right now because of the isolation that people are under. And I'd like to know what changes we've made as a police force to address that.
Feel so excited that we might serve a role in the community. One of the best things I could imagine coming out of this would be for us to make sure that our all of the town of Fairfax knows the numbers to call that are available in Fairfax, like the Mobile Crisis Unit and Mental Health and Drug Addiction Services that are readily available for for emergency response that aren't armed officers. So that alleviates, as the police officers have mentioned, when they've joined council meetings, that they do end up taking the load of all these things that really ought to be helped by other services that they should they so that they can do what they're supposed to do um without that extra load. And I just wanted to mention too, I'm excited, I hope we give the members of the remembering time check that it's eight. And I'd love to make sure that the members of the public get to share some of their questions that they might ask.
Okay, if I can throw in one more thing um that I'd like to ask about, and we've got quite a list of questions. So we'll see, we may, we may need more than one meeting to. In addition to the Mobile Crisis Unit, another program that currently exists and the Fairfax Police currently work with, but it's underfunded. And maybe there's room to be able to work with it more is what used to be called the Youth Court. But the Juvenile Diverge Program, which used to be part of the YMCA, but now it's separated out and they're trying to expand. But they need funding to do that. Anyway, that is, and Dan Carney is a person who we might someday want to have, do invite Dan to a meeting. Daria.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna shut up after this. Want to underscore um how important I feel it is to that we take care of our law enforcement and that uh we know that um many police officers are traumatized and uh function with some level of PTSD. Um, and that is um something that really seriously needs to be addressed uh at at the get go. And when we hire and evaluate for aces for adverse childhood experiences and trauma, so that we can better take care of our officers and uh support them in uh being healthy and having what they need in order to minimize their own trauma and uh deal with it. And we in that goes, you know, we know that it's not easy being a cop. And uh families of cops often suffer from violence themselves. And that, you know, they're just like the rest of us uh in in that regard. But i- in having a even more difficult time because so often their own effectiveness is thwarted by the justice system or uh this, that, or the other thing, which makes it much harder to um feel the uh, you know, agency and efficacy in the role that uh feeds and feeds us and keeps us going.
Yeah, we do need to wrap it up with Patrice.
Just one thing, and it's piggybacking on exactly what Daria said. Um, how can we make our officers feel like more of a part of our community? It's my understanding that most of them live outside of Fairfax for financial reasons. So how can we welcome them into the community and make them feel integrated within this community while they are here?
Okay, um, is this, we we should get to uh listening to the public. And we also should talk a bit about, I think we're agreed that two about two weeks from now is a good time for another meeting. So we'll do a doodle poll about that. Um, Anne?
Can I, um, it sounds like um from our conversation with Lisa about the doodle poll that Wednesdays at this time were, that was going to work for her the best. So I'm I'm wondering if I need to send out a doodle poll, if we can just have Wednesday every two weeks.
As long as it's not a council meeting. Watch out for them. They happen Wednesday evenings.
They do.
Oh.
But, yeah, yeah. So um, why don't we just, I I would prefer to just move right to getting into the public comment. And uh, and so if we could, if you want, if we can all really quickly look at our calendars, we could do this. But but we knew need to make sure Lisa's good with it. She did say Wednesdays is generally a better time of the week for her.
I I think.
So it sounds like we'll go for Wednesdays and we'll.
I mean, it is a a good point about the council meetings, but we can also alternate that two week and just keep it flowing. But um, yeah, if you want to talk offline about this, Bruce, I'm.
Well, next Wednesday, we have a council meeting and the Wednesday after that, we do not. Of that, I I don't even need to look at my calendar. So.
Okay. Okay, so um, there are four folks in um in the public, and I I don't see any raised hands unless they want to raise a hand. Okay, I have one. Dee Lee would um talk, and I just want to say that it will be um it's three minutes. So please, I'll, I will time and um you can go ahead and speak, Dee. You are unmuted. Or you can unmute yourself. You need to unmute yourself.
Muted, there we go.
Hello, uh, my hand was not raised, actually. I was just watching.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
But since I am now letting you know that, um, I would like to let you all know that I appreciate whatever good endeavors you are um occupied with. And also um say uh that I think it's unwise to make assumptions as to what kind of progress needs to be made with our police department. Because I think it's already one of the the best in the county, the state, maybe the country. And they should be looked upon to be a model for community policing, which they have been for many years. And um have a great support from the community. Um, I had a story from a a friend whose husband, many years ago, when Chief Moran was chief, who uh had a psychotic episode under the influence of drugs. He was a person of color, a black man. She called the police because she was afraid for her life. And uh chief and another officer came and it could have turned out badly, but it turned out very, very well. They were really understanding about what was going on and they de-escalated the situation as a social worker may have been if they were not afraid for their life. And so I I say, take baby steps and take a look at what we have here, which is really great. And and try to support it as much as y'all can. And if there's, if there's improvement to be made, go for it. But really, you know, don't make assumptions and take a look at what we have going on. So um, thank you all for whatever your good intent is. And I will unmute myself. On how to do that.
Okay, now uh next is Joe. Joe, go ahead and unmute.
Hi, good evening. Um, good to see you all. And um, yeah, just really um appreciating uh the the conversation and the dialogue and and then and the formation of this committee. So thank you for all stepping up. And just to back up a little bit, I just want to to endorse the idea of one of that the chair being selected from one of the non-council members on the committee, I think is a is a um is an important piece. And um, I think it was laid out real clearly by Veronica, all the good reasons. So I won't uh get into all of that, but I think that's a a great idea. Um, and I love the idea of taking a week to or a meeting to prepare for um a visit from uh interim Acting Chief Rico. And um, I think an important question um for him, you guys spoke about statistics that are kept. And the truth is that statistics aren't kept um in terms of you know, race specifically. Um, there's about thirteen hundred incidents that took place last month. And of that, about ten percent um resulted in citations or arrests. So only that ten percent would have information on race. So it's the other ninety percent is not saying here in Fairfax for sure, because I don't know. But across the country, that's where a lot of the problems persist and the overpresence of policing. And um some of the um concerning behaviors are um, you know, incidents that don't lead um to citations or arrests, but are that are just used as a a show of force. So there is the the RIPA Act, which was passed in twenty eighteen and and all police departments um have to put it in place by twenty twenty-three. And because of our small population, we're not required until the last bit in twenty twenty-three. But I I understand that the software has been purchased and so it could be implemented right away by the town of Fairfax, two years in advance. And I think that's um a step that should be taken. And it's specific to um traffic stops. And I think it would be great to implement that type of behavior and that type of tracking for all incidents that the police are involved in. So I'd I'd love to hear that discussion um with um interim Acting Chief Rico. And then lastly, maybe a discussion with him, a a hard discussion about the institution of policing and and what we've all witnessed. Um, some of us for a lot longer, but all of us definitely um, you know, over the summer um and into the fall. And uh, um, and the systemic racism involved in the institution of policing. And and it's inevitable that it that it is in police forces. And um, if he acknowledges that, I think that's an important piece. So thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, anyone else from the public? Okay. No hands.
All right. Well, thank you. We'll bring it back to the committee. And we're just about right on time. Um, I did glance at my calendar and the following Wednesday is I've got two meetings that conflict with each other that I don't even know which one I'm going to have to miss. But I am not going to be able to do this. So I'm not sure would are any other days of the week. And then the following Wednesday after that is council meeting again. So.
It was, when we did the poll, it was Monday, Wednesdays and Fridays. And um Wednesday, Monday and Wednesday seems the more optimal from that poll, but I don't know.
Yeah, um, and Mondays, my Mondays are actually all open in the next few weeks. So and but also Tuesdays are open.
Monday, the fifth, that would be the two weeks Monday. Does that work for everybody?
Everyone except Lisa.
Lisa said Monday. Yeah, that's right. She said Monday was absolutely no, right? That was the day she definitely couldn't do it. Okay, Monday's out.
Wednesday, so at least Wednesday and Fridays.
Was there a reason why Tuesdays and Thursdays weren't on the?
I just, people didn't pick that.
Oh, okay, those were people on this committee didn't pick it. Okay.
I would definitely prefer a Tuesday or a Thursday over a Friday meeting. By the end of the week, I'm just kind of exhausted and Fridays would be really hard.
Yeah.
Uh, I I prefer Wednesdays um or or Mondays, but, you know, uh, I would be tired on Tuesday, Thursday, but I can make it happen.
I think what I'm going to have to do is talk to Lisa again and then put a doodle poll out. So, okay, to be determined. So, okay, to be determined.
Let's, let's do it with a doodle poll, but we can have lots of choices. Doodle polls are easy to, you know. And I assume we are all looking at evening meetings like this. Yeah, okay, so Veronica?
Just wanted to ask, first of all, Anne, I want to name again how grateful I am that you're doing this with us. And thanks for showing up. Might we anticipate the doodle poll at the end of tomorrow?
Well, I have to talk to Lisa, so yes, tomorrow after I talk with her.
Thanks a lot.
Okay, yeah. All right, I'm, I'm feeling really good about this, this meeting and this group. And I just, I feel like we have, we have stepped into it. And, and with a great deal of compassion, without even beginning to listen to the, to have the police here as our, you know, to talk with us. We already are, are showing a lot of, of, of understanding of the position that they are in and the complexity of all of our lives. So I appreciate that and it really hardens me, I think. And the overall community, I think if they, to your question, Veronica, earlier of what people might think of what we're doing here. I think as people see the kind of discussion we've had tonight, the kind of thoughts that we've brought up tonight, I think there will be more empathy for the role of this committee and for the, an openness to, to thinking about different models and thinking about different things. So I, I think organizing in a community is about bringing people in. Any other thoughts or feedback on the evening and then we can close? Okay, well, I guess at that point we'll adjourn.